Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance of the flag. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call of the board members?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson-Moore-SPurger.
Present.
Ms. Dooley.
Here.
Dr. Craft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever. Mr. Morris.
Yes.
And Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Thank you.
I now need a motion from the board to approve the agenda.
I move to.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the agenda.
And I will second it.
All approved. All in favor, all opposed? We will now have. Mrs. Hoover will give us an update on the budget.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant and Dr. Gurley and school board members. This evening, we will be presenting information on the FY 2024 budget development. This presentation will be divided up into sections. So we ask that you ask your questions as we go along in the presentation. I will. I'll be presenting the budget priorities and revenues. Ms. Powell will go over the general student enrollment and demographic information. Dr. Odie will be presenting enrollment information on the English second language students. And additionally, she will go over students' experiences. And then Dr. Gurley will be presenting changes to the FY 23 budget from the FY 24 budget. Here are the budget priorities that we have set for the FY 2024 budget. Budget priorities help us as we develop the budget. Our budget priorities are building up foundational skills, supporting social, emotional, and mental health for the students and staff, meet or exceed competitive staff compensation and benefits. And our budget priorities are in line with our strategic plan. And Ms. Powell will come forward and speak on the enrollment.
Good evening, Chairman Bryant, members of the board, and Dr. Gurley. This first chart that I want to share with you all just shows the overall growth of our enrollment or the overall trend with our enrollment. It's important to note that our enrollment has recovered to the pre-pandemic levels that we, you know, where we were before the school closures during the pandemic. We are actually within seventy students of our 2018 fall number, and that was our peak for the time period that this graph has been, you know, tracking. Housing developments, including the South First Street redevelopment and the Friendship Court redevelopment, those, as well as other developments in the community, are what we really need to keep an eye on because those are going to be the big drivers for these numbers moving forward. So these are some charts you're accustomed to seeing. They, the top set of pie charts is just showing the makeup of our student body with regard to race. And what we continue to see is that movement of, you know, fewer students identifying as a single race or ethnicity in general, especially with our Black African-American students. More of them are falling into the other category because they identify with multiple race choices when those different forms are being completed. What you'll also notice is there's a significant jump in our number of students who are identified as disadvantaged. And I'm going to speak to why that is in a couple of slides. So just, I know there are going to be questions there and just hold those questions for just a moment. Continuing with these charts that we've been doing for many years. And again, you'll see that what we do is we snapshot these in ten-year increments. That's something I inherited from my predecessor. And I do think it's an interesting look back to see how we move, you know, decade to decade, if you will. So this set of charts, all of them reflect snapshots from the end of the school year, June 2002, 2012, and 2022. So the top set of pie charts just reflects of our total disadvantaged student population, what percentage falls into each of those three categories that we've been tracking for decades, which are, you know, white, single ethnicity, Black African-Americans as a single ethnicity, and then the all-other group. And so you can see that there on the top row. The bottom row looks at the percentage of disadvantaged students identified within ethnicity. So the way you read that, let me scoot this over here. For, as of June of 2022, fifty-five point seven percent of our white students were identified as economically disadvantaged, and ninety-two percent of our Black students and eighty percent of our other stu-, all other students. So getting to the, what are the drivers of the jump in our disadvantaged student numbers? The first one is Medicaid. What we clearly see is that as our student population is growing, our number of Medicaid eligible students are keeping pace with that growth. So that means a lot of our growth happens to be in the student population that is disadvantaged, they're what they call direct certified as eligible for Medicaid. The next big thing that we are recognizing is that we have a significant increase in our McKinney-Vento students, which those are students who are identified as homeless youth population. So just to give you an idea, by way of contrast, last year, there were fifty-six students across thirty families who were identified as, you know, under McKinney-Vento as homeless. That was for the entire school year. This year, as of last Friday, the thirteenth, ninety-six students across forty-four families are identified as homeless. And of those students, over a third are in our ESL population. And Dr. Odie is going to be providing you more information on the trends we're seeing with our ESL students. This third point, and this is a significant point, and it's, during the pandemic, there, when all students were eating for free, you sort of lose a handle and it sort of masked any kind of measurements around students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. So we had three schools who were CEP schools before COVID. During COVID, coming into this year, we added Walker, Beaufort, and CHS. So not just more elementary schools, but three large schools. And the way that the numbers work with CEP, because you no longer are collecting any meal applications for free and reduced meals, is if you're eligible to become a CEP school based on your, what's called, direct certified population, students who are Medicaid eligible, CHIP, TANF, those different programs, then the way the data is handled is that's direct cert population. You multiply that by one point six, and that becomes the disadvantaged population for the school. That's how they extrapolate that. So you need to understand that that's also at play in the numbers in those charts that you saw earlier. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about our enrollment and the demographic information that I've shared this evening.
Yeah. Just a couple of questions. One is, back to the charts on the top row there. I'm wondering, how are the, we have a lot of families from Afghanistan, and racially, how are they identified?
Are they white or? Letting me go backwards. No, they would not. Well, so it is, I want to be clear, it is self-identification.
Okay.
But there are a number of other options. And I am sorry, I don't know why the up arrow is not working to take me backwards in the presentation. But, Beth, do you want to add a comment about that?
I would simply add that those categories are, there's state definitions and federal definitions. They're very, very similar to one another, but neither of them really speaks to folks from the Middle East. And so it really, that's a matter of discretion. We sometimes see them tagged as Asian, and we sometimes see them tagged as white. And then there might be others. But in my work with registration, those are the two most common options. But that's just an area where I think the categories, often categories are, have limited use.
Yeah.
And that's one where it prevents a struggle, it causes a struggle.
Yeah, it looks like there's quite a change in the last ten years, you know, in great increase. And then I guess the blue, which is white students, and quite a decrease in Black students who are disadvantaged. So just wondering what accounts for that.
Well, I think, again, it is self-identification, as Ms. Chuck spoke to, the categories for everything the federal government did, for better or worse, to expand the number of selections that students can make. It's, it's not something that we control as an administration. It's self-identification. Certainly, the influx of the ESL population from Afghanistan and places like that that don't have a clear category to choose from may be affecting some of these numbers. It is difficult to tease out. So I, with those three main drivers that I put together on the one slide, because it was, it was such a noticeable thing, believe me. I was like, okay, what, I can't just show these numbers and not at least have some, some idea of what's driving this. And so the CEP school phenomena and coming out of that time period, the fact that we had more schools going into CEP status during the time when all students were eating for free, you see that's kind of sudden impact, if you will. And again, you're going to see the information that Dr. Odie shares about the growth in our ESL population. That's certainly at play in these numbers, there's no doubt. And then I did check on Medicaid. And for all the growth we're experiencing, the Medicaid growth is, as a percentage of our overall population, is just keeping track, right? With the overall growth, the percentage is literally not changed. I don't think even a whole percent, which means, yeah, we're, the growth is significant, but the Medicaid numbers are tracking right along with it.
One other quick question regarding the homeless population. Are we counting, when we're looking at the ELL or ESL population, some of the families have lived in hotels for extended period of time. Are they, are those counted as?
They are counted, that's correct.
As homeless?
Right. And I would say, just to, I'll go down, yeah, I can go down, yay. I just recall that when I was putting, getting these numbers together, of the forty-four families that have been in situations of homelessness identified as such this year, ten did have moved into permanent housing. So it's constantly changing. But that number, as far as the number of students who are eligible for services under McKinney-Vento during the course of the year, that will only increase as we continue through the year. But there are some successes along the way. I was happy to hear that, you know.
Ms. Torres. Ms. Morrison-Burger. Ms. Dooley. Mr. Morris.
Thank you. Turn it over to Dr. Odie, she has more information on the ESL students.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Gurley. Very good to see you all this evening. So I do want to take a moment to go over our ESL outlook with you all today. Here, you're going to see just some information. Of course, based on what you've heard from Ms. Powell, there's, there has been a great influx of English language learners this year. You're going to hear me refer to them as Ls throughout the evening. This chart there before you shows where we ended last year with our Ls. In June of 2022, we had five hundred forty-eight Ls. By September thirtieth, we had increased to six hundred thirteen. And as of earlier this week, on the seventeenth, at last check, we're currently at six hundred forty-six Ls in the division. It is a great increase of ninety-eight English language learners since June. Another way to look at that is September thirtieth of 2021, we had four hundred sixty Ls in the division. So the six hundred thirteen that you see there, that we had as of September thirtieth of 2022, is a thirty-three percent increase, which is a hundred fifty-three students' Ls added in one year, with only a staffing increase of two additional ESL teachers. And we're projected to have one hundred additional Ls join us for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So the question has come up, how many of our Ls will be, we be graduating? So right now, there are twenty-nine Ls in twelfth grade. So we anticipate that we'll graduate those students off to move into their next phase of life in college career or military. So just an FYI, we do use that September thirtieth data because that's when we turn in a massive report to the state, to the DOE. As you probably know, our Ls join us. They enroll throughout the summer. They're, they're getting settled, they're joining our school division. But we have until September thirtieth to fully process them, to assess them, to see, to identify them as English language learners. So another piece of information I just wanted to share, we have not had a year in the last ten years, at least, where numbers have increased as they have this year. That's a, it's a tremendous growth for us. So you can also see here the enrollment by school. And you'll notice that Jackson-Vaya and CHS have the largest increases in enrollment. In fact, all of our schools had an increase in Ls, except for Burnley-Moran this year. They had a slight decrease. But that just really goes to show that our ESL population, they're in all of our schools, and it is our task and our joy and pleasure to support them and to help them to grow and develop. Another thing you notice on this slide are the FTEs that have been allocated. We currently have nineteen FTEs allocated to ESL. So that bottom row goes, shows you how many ESL teachers are supporting the Ls at those different schools. And, and one more tidbit for you. In Charlottesville City Schools, we typically try to keep our pupil teacher ratio for Ls at thirty to one for an ESL teacher. Now, the state only requires fifty to one, but we realize that that's quite high. And if we want to be successful in moving the needle with our Ls, then we have traditionally kept that at thirty to one. We have not been successful at doing that this year at all of our schools. So we do have work to do with staffing, and you'll see that later. On this slide, I just want to give you an idea of our English language proficiency levels here in the division. As you know, Level One students are typically our newcomers with limited to no English speaking skills. They arrive with no English, but with proper support, by the end of the year, I've experienced this as a principal of a school with high numbers of ESL students. With proper support, they, by the end of the year, they're talking so much in English, holding full, meaningful conversations with their peers, with their teachers. And it's such, it feels so good to have done that work. But we have to have the proper support to reach those levels. Eighty-four percent of our newly arrived students are Level One students, eighty-four percent of them. And so you can see there in the purple, that purple column shows the percentages, the percentage of Ls at each of our schools who are Level One. The chart has Level Two, Three, Four, but I truly want to focus on those Level One students. And I really want you to put your eyes on Venable for a moment. Venable is showing that seventy-six percent of their Ls are Level One. Now, we, we don't want to be fooled to think, well, they only have twenty-nine Ls at Venable, because twenty-two of those twenty-nine Ls are Level One students. And I will say, that's, that's huge to have that large amount. And so when a school has a small number, they may not have as much support as another school that has a larger number of Ls. So, but we still have to provide the support for those students. And then I, I want you to really look at the high school. So we are pretty much accustomed to Level One students entering at the elementary level. We support them, we teach them, we provide them their services. And then they move along to Level Two, and Three, and Four, and then to Level Five, where we're just monitoring them. And hopefully, by high school, they're at Three, Four, or Five. But we have that large number of Level One students who are entering our high school. And so it does present a particular challenge because we are still expected, certainly, to graduate them and to help them pass the SOL assessment. So again, we need to provide the appropriate supports. And I will say, we are proud of the work that we have done as we move our Ls from Level One on up to Level Five, hopefully, where we're monitoring them and they're more proficient in their English skills. But that just doesn't happen overnight. And it certainly can't happen without the proper staffing. And on this final slide for ESL, I thought it would be important to share with you the languages that are spoken by our Ls. We have here the top ten. As you probably know, Spanish is typically the most non-English language that is spoken by our students, as is the case in many school divisions. What I would like you to notice, though, is the Afghan population. The students that speak Dari and Pashto, our Afghan population, when you add those two numbers up, they exceed our Spanish-speaking population. So that's just indicative of where we are now. We have been welcoming so many students from different countries, from Afghanistan particularly recently, to our school division. And we are, we want to support them and help them to be the best that they can be. We do love our diversity. We love it. I, I see it as our biggest, one of our biggest strengths, but also one of our biggest challenges. And so we, we accept that challenge, and we work to make sure that our students have what they need. So all we do, when, we can't control what happens in the world and when we're going to receive students from other countries. What we control is what we do here in our division. We stand ready to teach, we stand ready to support, we stand ready to grow and develop our Ls. Are there any questions about ESL before I move on to the next section of my presentation?
Ms. Dooley. Ms. Morrison-Burger.
I have one question, but it might need to wait for later because I think we were talking about there might be staffing concerns around this. And so I just wanted to know what the staffing concerns were. Is it finding the people to fill the positions? Or is it the budget or both?
So, sorry. Right now, we, we moved from seventeen FTEs last year to nineteen FTEs this year. And this year, we, we've added two of those. Oh, we added two at the end of last year. And we have added one more that is posted. And we're waiting for someone to, to have the skill set, the credentials, and raise their hand and say, me, I'm ready to come and support Charlottesville City Schools. But we do have a budget request for additional FTEs that you'll hear about later. But again, yeah, staffing, we have to find the people. Everybody can't be an ESL teacher, you have to have those credentials. So once we get the staffing, then it's our job to find the people to fill those roles.
Dr. Craft?
Just curious about, where does, what part of the world is Kenyatta language spoken?
I knew you were going to ask me that. And I asked Dr. Fauci that just two days ago, and now I can't remember what she said. Maybe the Congo, she might have said the Congo. I'll, I'll Google it and tell you. But Rwanda, she did tell me that just two days ago. I should have written it down. I had not heard of that one either. So, a good question. Any other questions?
Ms. Torres.
Yeah, thank you. Was curious, I actually pulled out the legislative position book from the SBA right now because I was curious, is it, are we still in a space where the students in their first year, their assessment data is not reported?
Right, we, that is correct. We want them to pass. And, and I have seen it happen. But it won't hurt us if a Level One student doesn't pass. It would only help us.
Well, of course, we want them to pass. But no, I just, I don't want them to be penalized that first year. And I know that there's a lot of work, and the SBA has a lot of positions here. I, I would, I mean, we have no idea what these, these students, these people. I mean, we have no idea what these, these students, these people, these young, you know, families have gone through. So, I mean, I personally would, would love to see us continue to push, you know, where it's, it's not a. It's not a pressure point for them as we try and help them acclimate. Into our society, you know, um, so just was curious about that and I'll, I'll follow up a little bit with V S B A on some of the legislative positions. So just out of curiosity, I did notice the Berlin Rand and then, uh, i- is that just families moving out of the area, the decrease in their numbers there?
I'm not sure why their numbers have decreased, um, unless it's because some of them are moving to Venable with the, the change in, in zoning there.
It's some of, and some of it is related to hard drive, um, so that has a little, that has a little bit to do with it.
Yeah, I mean, I know there were some families through there, right?
And I do want to, um, with regards to your question about the assessment piece, so Dr. Odie is absolutely correct. The students are not penalized. However, at the secondary level, when, you know, we have gotten a lot of students in, you know, in that ninth through twelfth grade. Um, they are required to, um, to obtain those same verified credits. Um, so that does, um, present a lot of, um, a lot of challenges. And sometimes what we see in that data is that the, some of those students become dropouts. Because if they come here at the age of sixteen, they're, they're still required to have all the standard and verified credits. And we end up seeing some of those students go to work. Um, so we do have to think a little bit more innovatively. You know, I mean, there's no workaround for us in terms of the graduation requirement. Um, but we do have to think a little bit more innovatively and I think that's another, uh, reason why having the appropriate staffing. Here at the, um, high school level is, is essential for those students to be successful, um, because we're not able to remove that. I mean, uh, the first day they come in, they're required to still follow the graduation requirements. Did I miss anything? Yeah, so that, that is something to, I mean, I mean, it's definitely, you know. And when, when we talk about what can we do in terms of legislation, I think that that is, um, that's a big barrier, um, for our students. And, you know, and we are penalized, um, as a school division for that because there's just no way around that. Um, and I hate that.
Yeah, I mean, I would love and I'll, I'll try and remember personally to follow up with, uh, you know, our delegate and, and Senator on this as we look at this. I mean, I just feel like, um, yeah, to, for them to not get some kind of accommodation. Um, even in, and I don't know, I, the reading piece is a whole nother. Monster that we need to address. I mean, just to have to read in English and you're still learning the language is, is kind of a shame, I think, a crime. You know, but other, like if they're taking a math test and, and are they able to, they have to read it in English, correct? Yeah, yeah. And so to not offer accommodations, they, they might be a whiz at math, but, but they're struggling with the English. Um, so I'll follow up on that. And with all due respect, and please, but I need, I feel like I need to say this. I know you, you prefaced in saying that you're going to call, just refer to these students as L's. It, it just can, and I mean, if we're talking about a section like students who are English. We're working with English as a second language, can we just call them students instead of L's?
Absolutely.
I mean, just, I mean, I think that's a good reminder for all of us, you know, and instead of sped kids. I mean, they're, they're, they're students first, so I just felt like I needed to share that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Odie. I think, oh, you have a question still?
Oh, I had a question for the different levels for accommodations to that question about like dictionaries extended. I guess there are no time limits on S O L's necessarily. Um, that would all be part of their plan, their individualized ESL or E L L plan. Okay, what are some of the other accommodations that they might receive?
Um, gosh, let's see.
Dictionary is the big piece.
Small group, I'm thinking small group, um, and I'm not sure if they qualify for read aloud. Ms. Swift, do you know if that?
If, if they, um, are duly identified, so if they have an I U P, they could get the audio or the read aloud. Um, and the majority of students for the math and if they're taking science or the civics. Um, they can have the audio, um, accommodation.
Right, and English.
Yes, I mean, it is in English, yes, but they can also have the, the audio.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you, Dr. Odie.
Okay, thank you. And, and now I just want to share, um, some of our student experiences. We certainly have so many amazing learning opportunities, enrichment opportunities, extracurricular opportunities for our students. So I want to take this time to just share some of the things that we spend our monies on. And, and some of the things that we spend our time on to support our students. We'll start, of course, with the science of reading. This has certainly been a tremendous focus for us. Um, as you know, over there, you see I've included that reading rope. That you've seen before in literacy presentations. Our students receive high quality and engaging instruction from both sides of that reading rope. Language comprehension and word recognition. And we're working on developing phonemic awareness through sound play and articulation activities. As students are learning to make sounds, um, to map out sounds to letters. They're developing fluency and automaticity and so much more. Uh, we know that with all of these important strands woven together, we will develop skilled readers. So we've had so many teachers that are trained in le- letters. We have more that are currently being trained. Uh, we just want to make sure that our teachers are, are developed and ready with tools in their tool belt. To support our students as they, uh, become great readers. And, uh, we also have math workshop that has been a focus for us. Uh, our teachers are being trained there and making sure that they know how to support children at different levels. Uh, we're focusing on math fluency, on numeracy, using number talk, small group instruction, all kinds of great. Um, math activities so that our students are prepared as they enter into higher levels of math, as they move forward in their educational career. And of course, the data drives the decisions that we make, all that we do, we must utilize data. And the data has told us that we needed to focus more on science this year. And so as you know, we've hired a great new science coordinator. And she has, uh, presented some new resources to us, uh, STEM scopes and. Um, oh gosh, just lots of hands-on activities that our students, Five Ponds Press. Uh, that, that our teachers have been provided with. And so the teachers are singing these resources praises. The kids are enjoying their learning. Uh, and, and just thoroughly, thoroughly, um, enjoying all that they can in science. So I'm, I'm really excited about the growth that we will see as we come through the rest of this year in science. And as you know, we are a V T S S division, so tiered supports are very important to us. We want to make sure that we're meeting students' needs fully. Uh, and so we work with our schools and, uh, there's student success meetings as we see. Uh, to, as we, we look at those meetings, have those meetings to look at student strengths, areas of opportunity. Uh, and, and set plans up of how we can best support students in their growth and development. We just certainly want to make sure that we have the appropriate supports that are needed so that we can move students forward. And there you see that a picture of our avid students at a college, a university. So we provide avid supports, um, for our students. We have avid classes, avid teachers that are just really giving our students. Different types of experiences that they may not have been able to have otherwise. Uh, they've been to various, uh, college campuses, just to put their foot on the college campus to see college life. Uh, may just light that spark, uh, that that might be what they want to do, uh, next in their career. But we do know that, you know, we talk about those three E's, uh, and, and so college might not be it. It could be enlistment, it could be employment, but we, we like the idea of enrollment as well in colleges. So avid is a great way, uh, to get that going. And then let's see, um. You'll see there, oh, there's another picture of our Buford students at a Buford Model Congress. So our students were able to sit with, uh, Delegate Sally Hudson and Cree Deeds. And just talk about some real world issues. And that, what a great experience that is for our students. And, uh, even you, that, you know, having living museums for our students to do research on people from history. We want to make sure that we're providing amazing experiences for our students. And then as we work to, um, meet students' needs and continue to provide additional supports. We have a focus on social emotional wellness, as you know. So we want to make sure we provide a variety of opportunities so our students can be mentally and socially and emotionally well. One of our partners, of course, is Wild Rock. So we've provided nature play labs, summer camps. And some of those camps are directed towards multilingual families. So we're really working to meet the needs of all of our students. Um, Wild Rock has done weekly sessions on social emotional learning, for instance, at Burnley Moran for third grade. But truly, we, all of our schools are using Wild, Wild Rock, uh, especially our elementary schools. So, uh, we certainly appreciate that partnership. We have an ESL engineering club where students are able to code, work on electronics. And, uh, variety of different projects, again, giving, um, a, a wide breadth of experience for our students. And as I spoke with Mr. Jordan recently, he shared with me that we had two young ladies on the football team. So we're providing co-ed opportunities for our students. That's, that's different and great. Uh, so I'm excited about that. Um, and then of course, let's see, we have our, uh, fine arts performances, our fine arts opportunities. So I wanted to include this collaboration with Walker and Buford for a choral performance. And finally, as we, um, work to provide additional focus areas. And, and, uh, areas to meet students' needs, we have a program called Youth Futures. That the I R C runs and manages and really it's open to any immigrant student at our high school. So there, they're getting, they're receiving homework help. They're getting introduced to people in the community to support them as they move forward. And connections are important. We all know that connections are important and we're providing that for our students. Um, of course, you've heard from Bianca earlier this month about, um, Buford eats. So I've, I've been able to partake in some of the delicious and healthy vegetables there at Buford. So of course, our school nutrition program offers great and delicious and healthy foods. But we want to provide other options as well for our students, so that is happening. Um, and as you know, we continue to deal with the effects of COVID. So mental health supports continue to be a highly needed area for us. Our school, um, mental health professionals are still very much, uh, utilized in our schools. And much needed to support our students' mental health base, uh, mental health needs on a daily basis. And then I wanted to lastly highlight our mentor, uh, some of our mentorship opportunities and partnerships there. So you see our wonderful superintendent and our awesome high school principal there with the members of Mocha. Uh, we had some, some volunteers come to work with some of our students as mentors. And then, uh, the Chris Long Foundation has certainly provided so much for our division in the way of school supplies. And hygiene products and so many other things. So I just wanted to, of course, to take a few moments to talk about some of the experiences that we're providing for our students. This is just a snapshot. Uh, I could talk all day long about all the great things that we're doing for kids. Uh, and, and what, how we're spending our money, how we're utilizing the donations that are coming our way. Uh, so that we can, um, prepare, uh, life-ready students who are going to come back to Charlottesville. And lead the way here. So any questions about our student experiences at this time?
No questions on this.
I wanted to just ask a question going back to the instructional highlights and the science of reading and letters training. Um, can you remind me which teachers or how many have been, have completed that training? Like, and then what is the process moving forward? And kind of secondarily, are we, um, providing that to our E L L teachers as well? And then like, I don't know, all of this, like, how are we prioritizing teachers? Seems like E L L teachers and then the gen ed teachers who are collabing with both sped and E L L.
I can, I can get numbers for you specifically. I will tell you that, uh, it has been open to general ed teachers. And special education teachers, administrators, coaches. There, there is a wide range of different roles of teachers that have been taking the letters, um, training. Uh, we started it, I think, oh gosh, this is your, the third cohort, I think, of letters. Uh, teachers or letters cohort. And we want to continue because the more we have of teachers that are trained, the better we can support our students.
I guess to that end, when you say that it's open, are, like, is it optional?
It has been optional.
And is that something that we can make not optional?
We can.
I think we can talk about it. I, I think what Ms. Tato probably will say is that while it's been optional. Um, I remember if I'm not misquoting her at one of our last, um, success meetings. That, um, um, a large number of every grade is rep, has been represented. And that's what's contributed to us seeing increases in the data. Um, so I think we can talk about what making it, what mandating it looks like. I know that, um. Every, we've been largely represented at every school. I think that there, the outliers are, you know, few and far between at the, in this point. I know she recently had, we recently had some conversations about some trainings for, um, special education teachers. Beyond like letters, be, um, you know, how we can extend the work with Orton Gillenham. So yes, I, I think we can explore what that, what that looks like and in making sure that, you know, when student, as our students matriculate. And we have turnover, that students are still getting access to the, all that rich training that they're getting through the letters, through those letters cohorts.
I'm just, it seems like we're putting a lot of eggs in this basket and I believe in it. I mean, I, I'm a strong proponent of science of reading and letters, but I'm interested, like, when we get into spring and start analyzing. Uh, assessment outcomes, I would like to be able to trace it back, you know, to be able to see. Sorry, need to not gesticulate. Um, so would like to be able to see, you know, are we seeing the data match? The money that we're investing in this training and programming, like, are we getting the bang for the buck that we think that we are? Um, and, you know, there seems to be, you know, great crossover with our students. Who are identified as special ed and are English language learners. That seems to me that that should be a priority to make sure that those teachers have that training if they don't already.
And we, and we did have a conversation about how we can triangulate data in terms of. Because we know that some of our students who are, um, receiving services at the tier two and tier three level are receiving so many doses. So they're, everyone's exposed to this, um, science of reading. But then we do know that there are students who go on that are getting some high doses of some other, um, Orton Gillenham-based, Wilson-based. Um, um, interventions. So like, how do we triangulate? Like, which one is, you know, which one is moving the needle? So I think what it will come down to at some point is that, you know, this student has had this and this. And then being able to identify, um, you know, that based on, you know, it's almost like. Um, you know, looking at some problems of practice, that based on the fact that they've had these interventions that we can attest or attribute. That's the reason why those students are being successful, because those have been some of the conversations we've had during our school success meetings.
And I will add, you know, it's quite a testament to, because it hasn't been mandatory to take the letter. to take the letters that we have so many who have actually stepped up to the plate to take it. But beyond letters, Ms. Tittle is in PLC meetings and at planning. Our coaches are in those meetings and at planning. So our teachers plan together. So if we have a letters-trained teacher on a team with a non-letters-trained teacher, by osmosis, you know, they're getting some of that. It's not the same as actually going through the exact training, but we do have professional learning, of course, that we've been delivering throughout the year. And in those meetings are key to the success of our students as well. Those PLC meetings where they're discussing data and planning together at the planning meetings are really important.
Could I just ask a follow-up question to? I'm, I'm wondering if there's consistency across schools in terms of how many teachers have taken the letters training? If it vary, or if it varies very much by school? Do we know that?
I will have to get that information. When I'm looking at the numbers, maybe we have, I'm sure Ms. Tittle has a list of where the schools are, excuse me, where the teachers are, what schools. And so I can get that for you to see if there are some schools that have more letters-trained teachers than others.
And that may be something that, you know, we want to at least set some expectations to have, you know, some minimum number of, of staff at every school that has that training. Absolutely.
Since, may I?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Since we're on literacy. Since Ms. Dooly opened the door. So I think my understanding with the letters training too is, is that it starts, the cohort starts in the summer. I think it was opened up to anybody. But I, I agree wholeheartedly that I think, you know, the more staff that we have trained in that and a combination of Orton Gillingham or Wil- Wilson, I think, is best and better for all of our students. With the Virginia Literacy Act, which is happening, you know, I mean, I know that there's legislation and it would be great if, if things were kind of mandated as far as literacy, but I think that's in the works, I think. And I was on the special ed, the CAC meeting last night and, and there weren't a lot of parents. So I had the opportunity to ask and we talked because one of the resources that, that was part of the presentation had to do with dyslexia. And so I was curious, like, what type of collaboration there is with, with our special ed folks? And with Ms. Tittle and with, with reading and what type of training and crossover? And how many of the special education teachers are actually trained in that? And then some follow-up thoughts that I had today was just that a lot of these resources weren't available when, when my student was, was young and really needed them. But this is, again, what led me to continuing to be an advocate and, and sitting here today. And so I'm so grateful that a lot of these, these resources are now available and that they're being pushed out, you know, K1, 2. So, you know, as far as tier one instruction, these, these students are being exposed to this so that we're catching and supporting these students earlier. But it also made me think about what goals in an IEP for a student who is identified as dyslexic. And I'm curious too, so add to your list of information, your questions, please. Like, how many students do we have in the division who are actually identified with dyslexia as part of their disability? And what are we doing? And what are those goals? And what are the, how do the interventions differ for those students now? And retrospectively, what would my goals, what, what, excuse me, what would the goals for my daughter have looked like 10, 15 years ago? Because they weren't really targeted. Because I was told we aren't going to train somebody in Wilson because for fear of that person leaving the division. And, and that was, you know, years ago. So we're way beyond that. We have a lot of resources to support these kids. But now I feel like, and I want to ensure that somebody who is truly identified with a disability such as dyslexia or a reading disorder is getting specific IEP goals and interventions above and beyond what we're offering in the classroom. Because we're all getting some, we just know that they need, they need dosing, and a more intense dosing of something to help them. And again, dyslexia is tough because it's, or challenging because kids present differently. You know, I mean, very severe dyslexia to not so much. So we know that this has to be individualized, thus the IEP. But I, I, yeah, I want to make sure that we're not cutting any funding, that we're training as many stu-, you know, teachers in letters and Orton Gillingham. Again, I don't think there's a best or a one, one shoe fits all type of thing for every student. But the more that we have to offer all of our kids, you, you know where I'm at with that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for Dr. Odie? I guess we'll transition to the next session. Ms. Hoover.
All right, so now we're gonna, so now we're gonna shift into the revenues. And here you see a pie graph of our sources of revenue that come into the school division. The largest revenue that comes into the school division is the city appropriation of 59%. And then the second largest is the state revenue for 21%. And then the third source of revenue is the federal revenue, which makes up 17% of the monies received by the division. Now, the federal rep, federal revenues represent the SIR funds, nutrition and Title I, Title II, Title III, Title VI funds. When the SIR funds are spent and are gone, federal revenue will continue to be our third in order of revenues that come into, to the school division at a much lesser amount. In December, on December 15th, the governor released his proposed budget. It was mainly a technical adjustments of budget based on the adjusted daily membership because of the March 31st and September 30, 30, the ADMs were significantly higher than the original estimates. All budget lines in, that use the ADM were recalculated and reflect the increase for the ADM. And then the state sales tax for injections were updated. We're estimating that the division will receive about $2,554,452 in state revenue for FY '24. The governor's proposed budget also includes this one-time 1% retention bonus to employees that are employed with the division now and fiscal year 2023 and remain with us for fiscal year 2024. We don't know whether this proposal will pass or not. So staff will come back to the school board asking to use fund balance like we did for the one-time bonus payment. As I stated, the city appropriation is one of our largest, large, it is our largest. It's a primary source of revenue that comes into the school division. And we are very grateful to our city for supporting the school division and our students. The city uses the allocation formula where 40% of the new personal and real property taxes go to the schools. Our five-year trend for the school's contribution increased. The city has increased the annual contribution from 2.7 million to 4.2 million this past year. The city's allocation formula for fiscal year 2024 is estimating $4 million. And I just want to remind everyone that this range falls within relationship to the Blue Ring Commission report that was done almost 10 years ago. The $4 million in the formula allocation for the schools would remove our dependency on the federal relief funds, the non-reoccurring one-time funding, and would help us address our inflation and compensation issues. It's very critical that the city provide us this funding formula increase. It removes us from the federal funding cliff and it stabilizes our school operations. We'll continue to draw down our SIR funding for instruction and social and emotional and mental health per the deadlines. And this will put us in a position for the schools to support the city and the infrastructure projects via the gain share agreement that we have with the city. Here's a table of the SIR funds that we have to spend down as of the beginning of this fiscal year. The next grant to be spent by September 30th, 2023 is the CRRS A, or we'll call it the SIR II or the CARES II for $676,480. We'll use this, we'll draw down this remaining amount based on the one-time bonus that we did in December and custodial supplies. So we'll definitely spend this money by its deadline. The next deadline that we have is September 30th of 2024, which is the first quarter of fiscal year 2025. We've budgeted 1.2 million, I'm sorry, 1.9 million of our, our SIR funds to be used in this fiscal year. And we'll draw this down and more against that $10 million that you see. We have a spend, an SIR spending plan. And I've mentioned it in the last couple of presentations that is located on our school website of how we're going to spend our SIR funds over the, this fiscal year, next fiscal year and fiscal year '25. We'll spend down those funds, we're required to spend down those funds and we will spend down those funds. The SIR III grant has a requirement that we spend down 20% to address the learning loss. And this is about $2,0184. And we'll see this amount in support of our students to address their learning loss. Our focus in spending the SIR III funds is to support our teachers, our mental health needs, tutors and hourly interventionists, technology and social emotional support counselors and social workers in places through the school division. Are there any questions on the revenue? Okay.
Oh, yes, sir.
Do you have any questions? Morris, it's Morrison Burger.
I have a question, but I don't think it's for Renee. But whenever we revisit it, or maybe Dr. Gurley can address it. When we're talking about the tutors, tutors and hourly interventionists, I just wanted to know a little bit more about how that, where, where that support, which schools and, you know, what grades.
Dr. Pratt. Ms. Torres.
I, I just would like to see that thermometer as part of this presentation that's empty.
You want to see it fully drained out?
Yes.
We'll definitely put that in.
We've had to work hard for that. I think a lot of people could, yeah, relate to that. And then just quickly, I'm sorry, did you say how that 10 million for the ARPA SIR funds will be? How we're using it?
We're going to use that to support our teachers and their salaries. We're going to use it for our social emotional counselors and their salaries and benefits. We'll also use it for technology and custodial supplies and that tutoring and hourly interventionists.
Okay. And so I'm, I'm curious too, in, in the custodial supplies. So why, how did that get lumped in there or why?
It, it's due to the, the safety and sanitation. We still need to keep up with those protocols.
Okay. And then, I mean, that might be indefinite though, right? For a while, so then we've got, then we're going to have to roll that back into our.
That's the reason we have inflationary cost and increased cost and our nondiscretionary lines to continue to maintain that.
That, okay, that's right. I did see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoover. Dr. Gurley.
Take my glasses off to see. So I am going to talk about our budget changes and requests. The first thing that I want to start by saying is that, you know, hopefully what you've heard throughout our presentation is, you know, one, what happens here on a daily basis? And what happens here is centered around our students' experiences. So as I talk about our, our changes for the upcoming budget, and what we'll see is that nothing is going to change about our students' experience. Our goal is to preserve what happens to our students each and every day. So when we, as we said and we talked about, you know, what are we prioritizing? And we heard the things that were on your mind. We said, as we developed this, how do we preserve what happens in the classroom? And I, I know one day at a principal's meeting, you know, listening to, you know, just getting feedback from them and, you know, talking through with our superintendent's advisory committee about the things that are important to them, that's what's being preserved here. So as we, so if you remember, so as we, as we talk about this budget changes sheet, if you remember the governor's budget last year called for a 5% increase and then another 5% increase for next school year. So what you see on those first three lines is that the teachers will get a, will get one step plus a 3.75% increase for an average of a 5%, 5% raise. And then the same with the support staff. They will get a, they will get one step plus 4%, which will equal their five, their average of the 5% raise. And then lastly, the administrative staff will get one step plus their 3.75 for an average of 5%. I want to, if you notice next, it talks about step correction. And so it was brought to my attention, it was brought to my attention by a teacher. And, you know, I listen to teachers. So it was brought to my attention by, by a teacher and then subsequently by a few more teachers that during the pandemic, we had employees had, they had their salaries flo- frozen. And that was during 1910, was that 1921? So during the 2021 school year, their salaries were frozen. So for instance, if a teacher had completed 14 years of experience, had completed their 14th year, they were still frozen on step 13 instead of getting 14 for their next contract year. But we were hiring people from the outside who had completed 14 years. And instead of putting them on step 13 with their colleagues, we put them on step 14. So we have, we have an inequity right now where there are teachers who have this, well, employees who have the same years of experience, but they're being paid differently. So what we're doing, so I'm gonna go back to my, so we have people who have frozen steps based on, who have frozen steps while new employees were placed on their next experiential step. So therefore, what you see here is we plan to correct that freeze by, we plan to correct that freeze and that will come at a cost of $392,000. So I want to outline, I want to explain to you how we, outline for you how we plan to do that. The only people that will qualify for the correction are those employees that have remained in those positions that they were, they're still in the position that they were frozen in. So they have to still be in the same role. And the basis for this is that anyone who's changed a job, that we have given them their experiential credit when we change their. that we have given them their experiential credit when we change their position. So if they moved up and they became an assistant principal, we, we verified their years of experience and we've placed them correctly. If they've had some type of, if they moved to a coach role or if they went to some type of any other role, we've done recalibration in there. The only people who are truly frozen in the steps are those individuals who remained, who remained in those, in those positions.
Are we providing back pay or this is just a one-time catch-up?
This is catching them up to their right step.
They're on the right step.
Yep, so you and I started the same year. We started in 2002. So we are completing our 21st year, but you came from somewhere else and you're on, you're already on step 20, and I'm right now on step 19. So I'm asking them to fix me because I've been a teacher, I've been here, I've not changed my role. And so now you and I will be on the same step and you essentially won't be getting paid more than me. So there's no back pay, we're just catching people up, we're just catching them up and putting them on their right step. I hope I did that some justice.
Why were they frozen?
Because that was when we had that bad financial year. And I'm saying we, I wasn't here, but that was the year, that was the year that Charlesville City Schools had a bad financial year. And I think we, I think we thought we had the best of intentions, but someone forgot to say, hey, when new people come, you need to put them, you need to freeze them also. So I just applaud people for doing the right thing because, you know, as I told the team, we could have had a whole bunch of people who just resigned and reapplied for their jobs. So I just thankful that people showed up each and every day, and so this is a way for us to right, right our wrongs. Well, it's not a wrong, but just writing this unintended consequence that we've had. And so this, we figured out a way to make it work, and so we're going to make that work. Ms. Doolittle's calculating.
I guess I am just kind of curious what the amount would be if we did try to correct the last, is it three years that we've underpaid people?
I mean, it would be a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, you see what it costs in one school year. One school year would, one school year would cost us $392,000. Yeah.
Was that all employees?
All employees were frozen that year. Yes, I asked that question. All employees were frozen, were frozen that school year. Yes, ma'am.
I don't remember that in the budget. I mean, were we giving them, we gave them like a lump sum, but not the step?
If you remember back in March of 2020 when COVID hit, we had to go back and to ground zero and do our budget because the city said they were level funding us. And, and therefore, we did not give any salary actions at all that year. We, we didn't hardly do anything as far as increases.
Okay, so then when people came in subsequently after that, that's when the disparity happened.
That's correct.
I do remember, I remember that, that year very well. Okay, thank you.
We were still hiring people that year, and we were just saying, hey, you finished five years, and so we're going to give you, put you on step five when they should have been on four because that's what happened to a five-year teacher here that year. I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. But I just, I'm very thankful for the, the first teacher who just, who gave me that little gentle nudge, and then I had a couple of other teachers say, can you take a look at this? And so I think everybody wins, you know, everyone who's still frozen wins in this situation. So I'm just appreciative that, you know, hopefully this will be able to pass forward. So just thank you. So that's that. And then you see, and so you also see there that we have some increases, we have some increases to health insurance that we are anticipating. We are going to continue to support our E A P, our employee assistance, assistance program. And then there's some, there's some, another amount there with our Virginia Employment Commission for Unemployment. So I'm going to now talk about the non-reoccurring and nondiscretionary contracts. And so that, I know you all are accustomed to seeing this list. And so what I should say first is that inflation is driving everything up. And so let's keep that in mind as we look, look through this list. I'm not going to go through the list in its entirety like I did at the top, but I do want to bring your attention, draw your attention to some, a few items. So the first one is our transportation and maintenance costs. So those costs are not final. Our team did just receive those numbers within the last, within the last 24 hours. And so as you can see, that these two costs make up a significant amount of our nondiscretionary cost. And so we're going to continue to work with the city and see how we can hammer that out and see if we can get that number down a little bit because I, I have a few questions that I've asked of the team. But again, I don't want to put the city on the spot or, you know, or a team, we just need to work through and, and look how this compares to previous numbers and just make sure that we ask all the right questions. I know the city's been a very good partner with us, so I know that they'll welcome any questions that we have for them about in these two areas. The other thing that I want to draw your attention to is the ESL interpreting services and testing. And as you can see, I know you don't have the number two compared to from last year, but that number is increasing. That number is up significantly. And as you can imagine, that as we get more immigrant families and as we get more students who, who require ESL services, that we're going to require more interpreting services. We're going to require more, we're going to require more testing in this area for those students. So that cost, I would imagine, will go up. And if the, if we continue to trend up in terms of bringing on more students next year, when we stand before you about this time, we probably will be making the same request even again to allocate more funds to that area. Any questions with regards to the first part of this budget change request? All right, I will. Oh, I'm sorry. I took my glasses off so I can read, now I need to put them back on so I can see.
Where did you want to start, Mr. Bryant?
We'll start with you and then Ms. Torres.
Yeah, I had, I'm sitting here with the last year's budget.
Yes.
And this year's budget, and so there are a few things that I just wanted to ask about.
Absolutely.
The going back up to the Employee Assistance Program. I'm not sure if the numbers that I have from last year are, are the accurate ones, but it looks to me like there's a huge increase from $1,754 to $6,758. And I'm just curious, does that mean that there's just more people utilizing the E A P services? Is that what that is?
Absolutely. I, Ms. Lewis probably can speak more intelligently to this than I can, but I know that at one of our previous, during one of our previous conversations, our employees are accessing our E A P program. And I know that when we stood before you all, I mean, we were, we were at a point where we really needed to support people. And so that has definitely proven itself beneficial to our employees. They, they are receiving those referrals, they're, they're accessing the line, they're getting the referrals, and they're utilizing the services.
That's, that's wonderful. I'm really glad.
Additionally, the University of Virginia is doing a per-person.
Talk, speaking to the mic, I can't hear you. To make sure it's all.
I'm sorry, is it on?
Pull the mic down a little bit.
Excuse me, sorry about that.
Yep.
UVA went to a new model of per-person net pricing for E A P due to the fact that the level of service and taking advantage of those services has gone up. So more employees are taking advantage of the service, and now they've changed their structure, their model for how we are contracted for their services as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm also looking at the health insurance from last year to this year. And to me, I mean, it's looking like it went, it decreased almost by half from $818,000 to $476,000. Is that true? Could that be?
Yes. Let's see, let me see if I can get my years calibrated here. At FY22, we held our rates the same. So when we went into FY23, our health insurance went up about 10%. And so this year, our health insurance is going up 5%, 5.76%. And we're trying to keep up with medical inflation.
Okay, well, the num, I, maybe I'm just confused about the numbers there from the last year's budget to this year. It shows a big decrease, but you're saying that's.
We, we had an increase in FY23 of $818,000. And then in this year, we'll have another increase of $476,000.
Okay. I see. So these are all just increases, not the actual numbers?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so that.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, so the only, the other thing, I guess I'm just wondering about the pupil, the transportation and how, how this contract gets negotiated in light of the strange world of pupil transportation this last year, the lack of drivers? And how, how does that number get figured out? Kim Powell.
Chrissy Hamel provided quite a bit of detail that we haven't had an opportunity to dig through in the past 24 hours with other things that are going on, so we just received that. I did confirm, because one of the things that we're going to really focus on is the prior budgets, of course, they did change the wage rate from $18 an hour base, we're up to 21, which is great. Unfortunately, that hasn't translated into a big influx of additional drivers yet. We have two in training at this time and 10 on staff. Now, some of the money does go towards paying for K, cat drivers to help out. There's two that are currently doing some help work. But the reality is, the budget number that we were provided is based on 30 drivers, not including relief. And if we got to 20, I'm going to have some type of party, just all by myself.
So do we get money back?
No, so the, the city's addressed this question before. What happens with their vacancy savings, right? It feeds into their vacancy savings, and then that goes into some of the things you see in the, you know, the surplus numbers and all of that. But I, I believe, and I have, I've shared this with, with Chrissy in very preliminary discussions with Ms. Hamel, we're going to need to talk about this and what's realistic because this is based on, it's not 40 anymore. I've been told now it's 30. I need to further verify that. But I don't know if that's a realistic number for us to achieve. Just getting to, you know, 20 or the low 20s will be a significant improvement for us. So I just think there's, as Dr. Gurley alluded to earlier, there's just going to be some opportunity for discussion around the staffing that this is based on, what's realistic for the next year. We also need to take another look at bus purchases and, and where things are going with that. So they're noted as estimates on this change sheet because we want to really be clear that these numbers, they're, they're place, I think they're placeholders at this point. But we need to really talk with the city and understand, you know, their perspective on these numbers and exactly where everything's coming from, because I know maintenance has needs as well. Utilities jumped up quite a bit. I saw that at a glance, but we just, we were very, we have all, we have a lot of detail to comb through and just talk to, talk with them about, and make sure we land in a spot that makes sense.
So this would have then some implications for our joint work session with city council on February 8th?
Potentially, we would have the numbers squared away to a place where the city is comfortable and where we're comfortable and feeling good moving forward before then. And so then you would have an update for that work session. That certainly would be the goal.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I follow up just to one, what you're talking about? Now, I do, I don't remember a lot from 2020 March, but I do remember we had a meeting, and I remember asking, what happens when the buses aren't being driven? Where does the gas money go? Or if positions aren't filled, where does that money go? Where does that money go? And I remember in the meeting, and I, it's on video somewhere, but the answer was that, that's the estimate. And when we go over, we're not charged any extra, but when we go under, the city keeps that balance. And so we started talking about then about getting a contract that actually shows like an itemized of what we're paying for, because all we ever get is the, the final figure, the increase. So I didn't, I didn't know that that number is based on the estimated drivers that we should be getting. So if those aren't filled, it would seem like that's a significant amount. It would be nice if it could be credited toward one of the others, like you were saying.
So vacancy savings, I think, has been a considerable factor in pupil transportation. It's also a factor in maintenance right now, to be honest. They have quite a few skilled trades positions that they need to fill, and that's been the case for some time. So on the one hand, there'll be these areas where there are savings. And then on the other, there will be budget line items where they underestimated, for example, utilities in some cases or materials and supplies. They have had increases in, you know, contract services that support our schools as well. So there are pluses and minuses all through the budget, and it, and because it is, it's, they don't have any crystal walls over there anymore than we do. So they're estimates that set these contract prices. And we do know the surplus, any surplus from their operations, this, with regard to the schools and any other department or agency, it all rolls into their final settlement of the year and that surplus number. So that's, and then there are decisions made for the good of the city based on those funds. But it, we are trying and to look more carefully and have a common understanding of these line items and make sure that we understand where these, where these contract values are set at the beginning, that we all feel like, feel good about where those values are set. But there are going to be pluses and minuses. So for the areas where we have, where they have savings in relation to the operations for us, because positions aren't filled, there, there are also lines where they're having overages. In the world of transportation, one of those areas is special transportation needs. McKinney-Vento, the homeless transportation, the money we get through McKinney-Vento for homeless is not very much. I won't quote a figure because I don't have it off the top of my head, but a lot more, you know, money goes into paying for contract services to support the homeless students than what we get from McKinney-Vento.
Can we see one of the contracts as a follow-up, like can you email it to us?
So all we get is the, we get the number, and then we request this additional budget detail, which we could certainly share with you all, the, the spreadsheets that we've received.
Okay, Ms. Torres, do you have a question?
Maybe. See if I can parse through all of that. So I was curious if you guys could speak to please just the, the V E C unemployment? Because I don't think I've ever seen that on one of our funding request forms.
You haven't seen that in quite a long while. The, the school division is a pay-as-you-go division, meaning as people leave us and then file for unemployment, we pay on them as we go. And therefore, over the last two years, people have left us and have filed for unemployment, and we're paying on them, and that cost has gone up on us.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that. And then last year, did we not, the public transportation and maintenance, didn't we roll that right back into what we asked for from the city? And are we considering that again, or because we're, things are different, we're looking at this differently?
That is certainly a consideration. We had, that last year, I guess it was the first time that we've done that, where we just said, okay, you know, this is our ask, and then this is what we need. I think in this particular year, looking at where the formula allocation has us sitting at this point, you know, whether or not that's something the board would like to do, it'd certainly be at your discretion. But what Ms. Hoover and Dr. Gurley have put together here, we're, we're at a balanced budget because frankly, it's a good year for the formula allocation. We all know there are years that aren't so good.
Right.
And in those years, the city thankfully goes beyond the formula allocation. So I think it's really important. So I think it's really important to keep that in mind.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm grateful for where we're at, but I just was curious about that. And then also, didn't we pay or use some of our S R funds to pay for the increase in, in bus driver?
We, we have, so until you all take action, what we've done when they've been trying to move forward and, and help solve the problem with the driver shortage, what we've done for the bonus, and then more recently for that wage move, we've come, we've asked you to kind of give the nod to say, yes, if needed, we're gonna dip into these funds. But you may also recall that when we've had those agenda items, I have shared with you that the probability of us needing to do that is, was very unlikely because of the staffing shortages that seem, that are persisting, which again is the main thing I think we need to revisit with the city, um, with the maintenance and the transportation pieces. I just feel like the vacancy savings, particularly for transportation, along with the bus purchase decisions, we just need to talk those out some more.
Thank you.
Stu Lee? Mr. Morris?
I'm gonna bring up a, a point Ms. Dooly brought up earlier in terms of the step correction. I'm not huge on retention bonuses, to be honest, um, but I feel like there's, needs to be additional, I guess, compensation for missing out on that pay in terms of, like, thinking about opportunity costs that what they could have done with that money. Even if it's just as some, something simple as they had that money, um, being on the correct step and they could have invested in the stock market at six percent or something like that, eight percent, who knows? Um, I just feel like there needs to be an additional correction and I'm interested if a, a plan could be brought to us, um, in regards to that step correction.
Oh, Dr. Gurley, do you mind if I say something first? Just, that analysis would be a very complex analysis, because you're gonna, over, because this step correction situation occurred over two years during the pandemic, it's pretty straight. As challenging or as complicated as that analysis was, at least it was just a matter of who do we have here now in the same position that was in that position? Same position, same pay table, because that's really only where the equity issue comes in, June thirtieth of twenty twenty. So if you have an employee that changed jobs in the middle of that, figuring out, and they, so they've only, maybe they were only in that position for one year versus two years, but then they got a promotion since then. And there's just so many other factors that are gonna come into play. And the other thing you have to realize is with this, it, what this move is intended to correct is the equity issue between the people who have stayed with us and didn't resign and re-enter versus new people coming in. Yes, we've had new people coming in, they chose to come work for us during this time. The other people could have chosen to leave, if, you know, so I just, because of the complication and the cost, that, that's not a, a road I would recommend going down. The course of action that should have been taken when you freeze salary scales, what you're supposed to do is you're supposed to take the salaries and roll them up one step. That step was missed, that was not done. And, um, you know, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that earlier, but that is the way to handle a freeze. Where I come from in Green County, believe me, we know how to handle freezes. But, um, that, that wasn't hap- that didn't happen here, but it would be very complex and costly to approach it in another way. I'm sorry, Dr. Gurley.
And, and I will say that too, in just talking with my colleagues, um, from the area and from other regions and just thinking of previous experiences, the actual freeze itself is not uncommon. You know, for employees to have their, um, their salaries frozen. And so I think that I, I am, um, you know, I am just really thankful that we're able to even make the recommendation to fix it. Because I just know that, that that part within itself is a lift. And then I think about, you know, outside of how we're fixing it now, that it truly does come at a cost. I will tell you that we are, and, uh, we are embarking upon, well, we are in a salary study. Ms. Lewis and Ms. Hoover and I had our first meeting. And there are some things that we do need to do there. And I will tell you that the, um, the price tag is very steep. So I think some of it, while I don't know, you know, but we'll do whatever the board wants, but I will tell you that when, as we start to share some of that other information from the salary study, I think it's gonna shed light to that, you know, in order to really get our employees where they need to be, and that's not about correcting steps. That's ensuring that they are, um, being, we're being competitive with market value. That if we, once we show those figures, that, I mean, that's a big price tag to do. And we feel strongly that we do need to do something, and so they presented various options for us. But I, I do think that our employees will, um, they will appreciate that too. And we will need to figure out a way to make that happen and if we can make that happen, but I think it's definitely worth considering. Yes, we do. Oh, God, I put, I wrote it on, that's in my note.
And to be clear, we're not just talking about teachers, we're doing this for nurses, any, anyone who's in the same job that, that they're now, that they were in when the freeze occurred. This will stop the situation from any new people, you know, that, that inequity situation, which is really what this is about, or that's our focus, I should say. But the subjects of back pay, and there was something came up, but what about people who are no longer with us? Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'd be clear, I wasn't talking about people that are no longer with us, I'm talking about additional to, um, for the people that stayed with us and, you know, when the governor signed something and, and the budget of a bonus and we, we jump at it to fulfill the bonus for everyone else that's not within the S O Q. But I'm gonna trust you, I'm gonna trust you on this, uh, on the, um, salary study, because I know that's been in the works, um, in listening to what you say as well. But I, you know, sometimes just because something's complicated doesn't mean we shouldn't do something to correct the issue.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, Dr. Craft, you had a question?
Yeah, I just had a question about something that isn't on here, about contracts. And I was looking at last year's budget. This has to do with fine arts and last year's budget showed that we ended our contract with the Richmond Ballet that was coming in. But I know that we have Charlottesville Ballet coming in to work with our students. And I'm wondering if we have a contract with Charlottesville Ballet now, or will we have that going forward?
Right, we do, that's going, that's been working really well, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the cost, I don't know why my initial was there, it was no cost, but I'm pretty sure there is a cost. But, um, it's, I do know, um, based on our conversation last year, which was my first budget, that what the, the fee for Charlottesville was way significantly substantially less than what the Richmond Ballet was charging us. And we actually have, we're actually, we actually get to do more with the Charlottesville Ballet program. So it's still in the, it's still in the budget, we still are, mm-hmm, yeah, still in the budget. This budget change sheet is just things that we are making, making changes to. Yeah, we still are preserving, as I said when I first started this presentation, that we are preserving the experiences of our students. So our, we're not taking anything away from our students in this, um, in this, in this budget. Nor our teachers.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further comments for Dr. Gurley?
We'll have some more slides.
Oh, you do?
Yes. All right, so, um, our next, our next, um, slide deals with our school-based programs, um, supports and improvements. And so, um, you heard earlier, we keep talking, you know, there's a theme here. And one of those themes deals with our students who receive, um, ESL services. So we are, if you notice on that first line, we are, um, adding additional, um, staff there. Um, and so this will allow us to continue to provide those quality services and supports. We are converting a temporary position. So you see that there's an addition of three in that far right-hand column. We are converting one of our temporary positions to a permanent position. And then we are adding two additional, um, teaching positions in this area for a total of three. And so I will tell you that the ask, um, the ask was for two. So we actually, here, we're gonna exceed what the ask is, um, so that, you know, we can brace for growth. We can br- brace for the growth, because we know that it's going to happen. Um, and I think Dr. Odie shared with you, well, she did share with you that, um, Dr. Jeanne Fauci is, uh, projecting that we will probably see a growth of, um, a growth of one hundred for next school year. So we will have three, uh, based on, um, based on what we've put in place here. I'm gonna move down to the next one, where you see, um, dat- data and digital learning specialists. So I will tell you that, um, while I've not been here over ten, while I've not been here ten years, that, um, for the last ten years at least in the state of Virginia, we've seen an increase in the state, um, state reporting mandates. So that's, um, those are our, um, our record collections, our student data record collections. Those, um, require someone, and that someone in this case is Ann Skipper, who is absolutely amazing. It requires her to extract data and bill files, uh, for various departments in order to submit those things. And so, um, I would dare say I had written the number in my notebook and I probably should have written it in this presentation, but I know that there are at least forty state reports. And so what, uh, Mr. Cuomo has some positions that he's been paying on an hourly basis. So what we are going to do here is we are going to convert some of that hourly money and add just a little bit of money here to create a full position. And so this point, um, we, this person will support, provide support to, um, Ann Skipper with regards to pulling the data and doing the record submissions. In addition to that, um, this position will also help with the, um, staff development needs of our staff as it relates to technology. So being able to use these products, um, for example, how to be a good user of Power School. I know that, um, I've had conversations with our team, like, you know, we just can't call Ms. Skipper and say, can you show me how to do, because, you know, she has work going on. And, and a lot of times what I'm finding is that people are asking her the same questions. And part of that problem is, part of the issue is, we have this gap where we don't have someone to do the trainings unless the, the director of technology goes to do the training, which then spreads thin. So we actually, so you see the ninety two thousand dollars here, but it, there's actually some cost savings here because he, he's combining some positions and we're adding a little bit of money here to make this a whole position. Um, and so this position will be on a teacher, uh, will be on the teacher's salary scale. The next thing, um, you see there is, um, teacher and there's a position for, um, a graduation coach. Uh, we've made a lot of strides in our efforts to increase our graduation rates. We are proposing a graduation coach to place emphasis on supporting the growing needs of our students. We know that our students, um, have trauma, um, they are experiencing a lot of life. We know that, uh, if we wait until they're twelfth graders to provide them the support, it just inundates the school council, it inund- it inundates the entire staff. So the graduation coach will essentially serve as a, uh, as a lifeguard in this building. They will work with our students, they will work in collaboration with our testing coordinator, so that we will identify those students who are, um, deficient in their verified credits. That's the students who need S O Ls, identify students who need standard credits, so they can be the liaison between the school counseling office, helping students, um, be in the liaison with the, uh, WALK program, helping to get students where they need to be, checking in with students, um, in terms of absenteeism. Um, and I think that, you know, as we've talked about this, that for me and what I've seen in previous experiences, this takes a little bit of the load off of the school counselor, because they're not, the school counselor doesn't have to focus on students who are in tier three, who are in crisis, who are barely trying to get to the, of the finish line. And so I know you all have heard me say that the most important day in a student life is not graduation, it's the day after graduation. So this role will also help with some of that workforce development, that many of the students that we're talking about in this bubble are not always college-bound, but we don't always have the mechanisms in place for those students to be successful, because we do place so much emphasis on college readiness. So this position can also work with like our C T E specialist, with helping students to develop and fine tune their career and academic plan, so that they're successful. Because I don't want us to just have high, a high graduation rate, but then we don't have students who are employable. Um, and so this person, um, can help in that area, connecting students with businesses and just making sure that they're, they're life-ready.
Dr. Gurley, can I ask, why not add another school counselor and reduce caseloads?
Um, that question came up, that question came up with the team and I think that, you know, I think school counselors, you know, I've talked with some school counselors and they, you know, we've had some, I had a conversation with a school counselor that said, could we just pull all of our E Ls to, students who are receiving E L services? Could you pull all of them off our caseload and give them to one person? I think we are appropriately staffed in terms of school counselors. I think that we really need someone who can pull away from the desk, pull away from the school and like be in the community. You know, we don't really, we do a good job with attendance, but we don't have an attendance worker. But we know that many of the students who sh- who straddled this bubble, who are credit deficient, are als- often students who have the attendance issues. So I mean, this person, this graduation coach is really the everything. So they are, in some aspects, they are a school counselor on a, on a given day.
I guess my concern is conversations that we've had previously about silos and ensuring that, you know, we've talked about just within this building, we've got a problem, you know, of teachers only teaching one type of student and not having any ownership, or in some cases, expressing that they're fearful of engaging with, you know, some of the students that you're describing. And so, you know, I've got some reservations about, um, you know, creating a separate caseload that is, you know, specifically comprised of students that, um,
I think that's a legit-
meet certain characteristics.
No, I believe that's a legitimate fear, um, and I have, and you know, I encouraged the team to give me the pushback, so I did get the pushback. They, the student still belongs to the school counselor. This person just gets to relieve a little bit of that stress of like, the school counselor doesn't have to devote a hundred and twenty percent and not be able to equitably divide themselves among the students on their caseload. I, I mean, I definitely think it's a, you know, it's a twelve and a dozen situation, it's kind of the same, it's kind of the same thing. And at heart, I mean, as we talk about, like, what's the, the credentials? I mean, ultimately, a school counselor probably would make, um, a really good graduation coach. I know in my previous experience, um, the graduation coach was a former school counselor. To some degree, they are the school counseling. I mean, we could create another school counselor and tell them to do the exact same, to tell them and, and ask them to do the exact same thing. It's just, this gives the person just a little bit more flexibility without having to have the load of having an entire caseload. I mean, they won't have, I mean, they will prioritize students, so prioritize seniors and juniors. And then, you know, fewer sophomores and freshmen, but you know, also, um, implore them to, you know, take on a lot of freshmen and not wait until we get too late. So I just think we have a little bit of cleaning up and I think the pandemic exposed a little bit of that. But they are all of our students. And, uh, I mean, I think it's a great debate that why not another counselor and I just think this position gives us just a little bit, gives the school a little bit more flexibility in terms of meeting the needs of students. So you're just not pigeonholed to the school, the responsibilities of the school counselor. I think that's ultimately what happens. It relieves them of a little bit of that, that school counselor responsibilities and gives them the flexibility to be in the community, pull the student, work closely with Ms. Burke and ensure the students have the verified credits and, you know, connect with the WALK, all things the school counselor would be doing, um, but just a little bit more flexibility to do it. But I'm open, um, you know, if as a board you say, I don't think we can support it and we do another school counselor, I think they'll be, you know, they'll be ecstatic, we still will need someone to do this type of work.
I also saw that you have the physician reporting to you and not- I also saw that you have the physician reporting to you and not Mr. Pitt?
Oh, no, we're supposed to Mr. Pitt.
Okay.
That might have been, yeah, no, it reports to Mr. Pitt.
Or am I looking at the wrong one?
It probably, it may have been missed. Yeah, we were working, we were working on it together.
You've got a few things, but I was curious if that was intentional.
No, it reports to the, it reports to the principal, even though I will be doing a lot of checking in because it's really important to me. Yeah. It does not report to me. I'll fix that. I don't need a Okay, oh.
Excuse me, just on this one point, uh are you aware of other school districts who are us utilizing this model of the graduation coach?
Absolutely. Um they, um I know Virginia Beach has a a model of this and there are various names to this position, but um Virginia Beach has a version of this. Um Hampton has a pr- a version of this, my previous school division. There's someone, sometimes what you hear, um you hear this um often referred to as dropout prevention, and I don't like that name. Um I want you to be a graduation coach. Um but yet you do, if you, in your Google searches, you probably will see dropout prevention specialist more than you will see the title called a graduation coach. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, they have the coach. All right, our next thing, um we have um, I'm sorry, I lost my place, did, lost my place. Um, oh, Longwood, I'm sorry. So we have um, we have this need to grow our own. I think what we've seen as people get promoted that um we just have this need to develop our own um our own, our next cadre of administrators. So we have um, we have partnered with Longwood to provide an administrative cohort right here in Charlottesville City Schools. And um the program is actually three semesters, so it will be the s- the fall of twenty twenty-three, this school year, um this upcoming school year, fall of twenty-three, the spring of twenty-four and the summer of twenty-four. So one year, the program costs less than six thousand dollars. It's like a no-brainer. So we, my recommendation is that we pay for half of it, um which means that, I mean, essentially it will cost someone three thousand dollars, which is unheard of, to get an administrative endorsement. I know that um I have gotten the um question about why not UVA? Um well, the reason why is that this program is for anyone with a teaching license, so you can't be a school counselor, you can't be a social worker. You have to have a minimum of three years' teaching experience. This is a certificate program. So this is to add the endorsement onto your current teaching certificate, so you must already possess a master's degree. So we put this out to our staff and we got about twenty-six responses. Um and fifteen of them were, I want to participate. And then there were some people that said, I want some more information. Um but this would allow us to pay for half of it. The cost would be forty-five thousand dollars. Um but my point was that I had gotten a question about why not UVA? UVA does not offer a certificate program. You have to, if you have a master's in English, you have to get a master's in admin. And I think what we see from, we put those things out there um when we get them from UVA, but we saw um a a big response from this, and it's because if I have a master's, why not take, you know, two classes a semester and and have this endorsement and have half of it paid for? We um would like to include this, um include a, the caveat that if they leave, they have to pay us in thirds. So if you stay one year, so you have a three-year obligation. And then if you leave, if you work for us for one year and then you leave, you gotta pay us back the remaining two-thirds. If you work two years, you owe us one-third. If you don't come back after you finish, then you owe us the the entire half. But the program is uh five thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and we're gonna pay half of it, we're gonna pay three thousand for each employee. So um there is a, um there's an informational um that will be happening soon. I spoke with the Longwood rep. Um Jessica Ford is the contact person. She's working with them and they're waiving the application fee and all of those other things uh for this program. But it gives us an opportunity to build our own and I think if this works well, we can continue on with something like this with the people who have some interest can become our second cohort. Um and we would be growing our own right here. Um the next thing you see is our Buford Athletics request. We got that from Mr. Jones and and uh some of it stems from his time over at um Buford. We had some situations where um, you know, we had football come back this school year. We weren't able, um there were moments where they weren't able to have an athletic trainer. The budget just didn't match the current programs happening over at um over at Buford. Um so he um, that request was made and this just allows us, allows them to ensure that they have what they need to provide our students with um, you know, safe and productive athletic programs. And then the last thing you see um is the Teacher of the Year. This was our inaugural year with our Teacher of the Year program. It looked really good when I watched it online. Um but we have included a budget here so that we can continue to do that and just, I think we can't say enough that we will still, we are still doing the golden apple. This just allows us to be competitive with the rest of the state um to participate in the um Teacher of the Year program. And then we have some reductions. And so unfortunately, we have had some positions that we have been unable to fill this school year. And so when that happens, we have vacancy savings. Um so you can see there that there is a vacancy, um there's a vacancy savings um of eight hundred and eighteen um thousand dollars um there. The next line, the star, um the star program. We had monies allocated for um those, the star position um over at Walker and Buford, and that's our um structured um autism program. We had funds um allocated there, but those positions were not filled the entire year. And what we found is the programs worked successfully. They are not, um the caseloads aren't high. Uh the finance team has met several times with the Special Education Department, um have met with the ladies and um the program is working successfully. So we're just gonna reduce the allocations for those positions, but it doesn't take anything away from the experiences of the students and those um and those programs. And then lastly, we had the um, the teachers, um it's the Teachers of Tomorrow program, which is facilitated by Virginia State. The program did happen this school year. It just had a different funding. We, we found that it had a different funding source. So we're just eliminating the half of a position that was dedicated um for that, and that's what you see reflected there. And we are still in conversation with um Virginia State University to see how we can continue or if we will continue that Teachers for Tomorrow program. And then um lastly, the re- um the revenues at the bottom. Um as you can see, the state um funding is increasing, so this is an increase, Dr. Craft. Um it's increasing by two point five million dollars there. And then we um, we are ending our dependency on our federal assistance, so um we will, so that's, you see that one point nine million dollars, um and we will continue to use our gain sharing and capital improvement uh funds in order to um work collaboratively with this um, with the city and spend the funds down. And then lastly, um our request is four million dollars from the city. Um and this is in line with our um formula allocation that we use yearly. Uh any questions about the um school-based programs, reductions and revenues?
I will start with uh Ms. McKeeve if she has any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gurley. Um so the questions that I have, I also agree with um is duly related to the um graduation coach. Like I think that's a, I I just, I'm looking at the kind of in my head where all of the positions are in the high school, and so many are focused on getting kids to graduation. Um and I do wonder, like, and I think the stress of being a school counselor could be that you have such a dramatic caseload that you can't meet the needs of all the kids on your caseload. And you're saying, of course, the caseload is reasonable, but it may allow all of our uh school counselors to uh better serve in this role as half graduation coach, a half school counselor. I'm not sure. I respect your expertise in this. I just, again, I worry about so many positions having this focus and what Doc, Ms. Dully said about silos. So um I also had the same concerns that Mr. Morrison, Ms. Dully had about the um contract uh result, the um step increase, the step correction. So um other than that, uh I appreciate all of this work. I, I think um four million I is, I know part of the Blue Ribbon Commission, I'm very well aware of the findings of that. Um I, I do think about four million dollars is a lot to be asking of the city at this time. Um so, but I do think that this is an incredibly limited budget that you're, you have made uh this ask of, and and it's all going to salaries and meeting, and frankly, supporting our community with um increased salaries for our staff um and teachers. So uh it's really hard to argue against it and I, I appreciate that and and really appreciate the focus on supporting our staff. So and which of course supports our students and of course not cutting any of the students' experience. So excellent work.
And I, what I will do before we meet again, I will um, I will pull the um, I'll pull the administrative staff here, so maybe Mr. Pitt and all of the school counselors to have a conversation because most certainly, if out of that conversation, they're like, we just, we need another school counselor, then that can most certainly be the ask if they, you know, I'm glad you threw that out there because I hadn't thought about there. If it's half school counselor, half graduation coach, you know, I can kind of put that ball in their court. You know, we um had a conversation about the graduation coach, but I mean, that's definitely not an end-all be-all. I would be interested to hear what they have to say as well. Thank you.
Stool. Mr. Morse. Mr. Huston-Burgher.
I have a few questions. Um the first one was about the technology position.
Yes.
Um I know you said it was helping support the ru- the state reports, but it, will that position also do reports for us? You remember when we were looking at like testing data or map data? And we were trying to talk about like how to follow a certain cohort and so the, we can actually extract the data before like they go to high school and that. So will this position do that type of work too?
Well, we actually, um interestingly enough, we had a conversation about that um at our last meeting about, we do have this need. Um you know, we have Ms. Swift who, you know, technically, she's a department of one. Um but you, it's assessment and accountability. And so there's a little bit of overlap between what should be happening in her department and then what happens with the state reporting and account of, with with the state reporting and being able to pull reports and being able to give. So I think we, we definitely have a vision of what we would like to work towards, and I think we can be innovative in like really what this looks like inside of Charlottesville City Schools, and that was just our last conversation we had this week. We so I think we all are thinking the same, the same way. We, we identify that there is a need. And so this position can definitely fill a lot of the gap of, the gaps plural, because we know that um Ms. uh and Ms. uh, yeah, Anne Skipper. Uh we know that Ms. Skipper, you know, she's just a team of, you know, in a sense, she's a team of one, but you know, she's doing a lot of this on her own and she does it on her own time and we, we gotta get her some help. I think this is a way to kind of meet the needs of um a couple of different gaps here.
Yeah. And then the other question is um about the graduation coach position or the counselor position. It will be helpful to see um like what the current caseloads are, and then for the graduating students, what are the outcomes for the students? Because I know we talk about, a lot about how we're college-focused. And if you're not on a college path, the outcomes, you don't have this, that there's some discrepancy between like the outcomes depending on the path. So maybe it would help to see like where do our students go after graduation and how those numbers break down.
Okay.
And that was it. Thank you.
Dr. Craft.
Well, um I really like this budget and um I appreciate uh the thought that's gone into it. Um I, I, I like uh learning about people like Anne Skipper who we don't get to meet, you know, we don't get to know who is this person doing this outstanding work there and to know that, you know, she could use some help. And so um you know, I, overall, I feel like um I'm, I'm grateful that we get to keep all of our uh mental health counselors, um keep all those services in place. You know, I was really worried about that, but you know, I feel really good about that. And you know, this budget should be um met in a very positive way by our city council. You know, I think what we're, where we're going with this and where, you know, what we're asking of them is um very reasonable this year. So I feel fortunate in where we find ourselves and I really do appreciate all the work that's gone into uh getting us to this point. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Torres.
Um, thank you. Um so just a quick question and a comment about the English second language positions, the three F T, um FTEs. So one is the temporary that's listed right now but not filled. Is that correct?
That's correct. So we're gonna, we're going to, with your blessing and the city's blessings, with money, we will take and we will make that position a permanent position. So that, they knew that that position that's posted would be temporary, would end at the end of the school year. So we'll make that position so that it continues on. And then we are requesting the additional two. So it's actually one additional position beyond um what Ms. uh Dr. Fouts is currently asking for.
So and then based on the earlier presentation and the numbers and the anticipated one hundred more students coming in, do we, do, do we feel that confident that three is enough? That we shouldn't have more support? Um I mean, when you're looking at the big picture and especially the number of of students who are coming into CHS, and then we can roll that right into your, your graduation coach, you know, I mean, there's so many needs. So I, again, I, I'm just, I've got concerns, you know, and I think we're doing a great job, but I'm, I'm sure people were a little conservative and hesitant to even ask for two.
Well, no, I mean, I think people, they, they're not afraid to ask here. That's, no, they're not. So what we know is that we are losing, uh we will be graduating twenty-nine. We will, we will be graduating twenty-nine. We uh with the addition of the three, with the addition of the three positions, and remember, the state is one to fifty, we are doing one to thirty, so that's ninety right there. So I believe we're in a good place in terms of, you think we're losing twenty-nine and we could potentially be getting one hundred. We won't get all eleven, uh we won't get all one hundred on the same day. Prayerfully, we won't get them all in the same day. But the three additional definitely will give us the support. And we had a conversation with the principals today, just to, uh Ms. Powell did an enrollment, um she did an enrollment projection with us at the principals' meeting today, just looking at what the trends may be. Um and we just have to make sure that we're working very closely with the IRC, so we have a heads up uh with regards to um now who are the students that we're getting, where are those students going? Um and we know that we have some um housing, you know, some new housing, um things that that will be popping up, that will be supporting our students. So we just need to make sure that we're working with the city to know where students are going, working with IRC. And I think that the, I think the three is uh definitely is the right move because remember, we're gonna be starting with three, but not starting with one hundred. Um so that will allow us to monitor as we grow.
Okay, thank you. Um and then if I may, and I know I sent a, a question earlier about supports for some students at K-Tech.
Yes.
So along those lines, there is um, and I don't remember the exact number, but some of the students who attend K-Tech are also English um as a second language or immigrant students who are there. And um in, in your follow-up or whoever's follow-up with, with Ms. Carter, and because our students follow Albemarle County's closing policy. and because our students follow Alamo County's closing policy, if K-Tech is closed, our students who are there don't have a place to go. So if we could look into or check in with Mr. Pitt or Ms., uh, Ms. Carter had, had offered, you know, that there is space there, but we would just have to have a staff member to go over and support those kids there. But to make sure, and this was just somebody who's come to me, who, who works with some of these students that has shared that in, in prior years. So if we can look at whether there's a space here, if K-Tech is closed, that these students know that they have to report to and do some work and/or it sounded like there's an opportunity if we had a staff member that could go over, um, and support them there in that space. So I just, before I forgot about that, I wanted to put that on your radar, please. Also, I mean, I'm intrigued by this, this graduation coach. I mean, I'd love to kind of see it plotted out. It sounded like you had a lot. I mean, there's definitely a need, right? There's a, and, and I would love to, I feel like, um, every student, but maybe some students need it more than others, should be, um, have a different type of relationship and contact with somebody who's really watching them from the time they get to Buford, you know, and, and to be able to track them up. But to not wait till 11th and 12th grade, but to really, and whether that's realigning or allocating the number among counselors so that they can really, um, follow them from the time they step foot in, in, in the high school and support them. Because I think a lot of them get lost and are off people's radars until you are at those last two years. And there's a lot to recoup at that point. And I'm sure there's a lot of models of what this could look like. And, and again, as far as, you know, pushing out into the community, that's a lot. I don't know that all of our, I mean, they'd have to be on some kind of schedule if we're gonna be making home visits or, or monitoring the attendance. But, I mean, I do think there's potential, but I, I've just got a lot of questions about that yet. So thank you for bringing that, um, to us for something to think about. And then in noticing, and maybe I missed something, but on the actual sheet for Buford, where they were asking for, um, the increase, their sheet, it says 2,000 and on here it says 5,000.
Yeah, they originally, on that budget change sheet, they originally, they had 2,000 and we increased it to five, we increased it to 5,000.
Yeah, and I know there were a lot of needs there. There were a lot of things that, that, so that's fine. I just wasn't sure where that, um, came up. And that's it. Thank you so much for all of this. Appreciate you and your team's work.
But lastly, um, to, it's probably been sitting so... Okay, um, the last thing here is that, uh, we do have some upcoming meetings. So the PTO meeting, which will be online, will be, um, that the 25th is next week, I believe. Yep, next Wednesday. So we have the PTO meeting where we will do a high-level overview of the, um, of the budget. We did this last year, I remember that. And then we have a community update, um, we have a community budget update that'll be online. Um, that's on the 31st. And then we will come back here on, during our regular, uh, during our regular session. And then, um, there's the public, um, hearing of the budget, um, on, on our next meeting. And, and again, by that time, I will, um, have tried to schedule that meeting while we'll have met with the school counselors just to talk about, um, to make sure I get their plight and the current needs. And then you see the remaining, um, and I did, I don't have it here, but I was not able to be here on the, um, 9th of January. And we were slated, I was slated to have a conversation during the superintendent's advisory meeting about the budget. So I just will give our staff members that are on the superintendent's advisory, um, meeting, um, an opportunity to, um, ask any budget things and give some feedback, uh, with regards to the budget on the last third, the last Thursday of this month. That's all. If we, any questions? I know we...
I do have a comment. Um, thank you, um, for your hard work and your staff on the budget. But I just want to hone in on one thing about the graduation coach. Um, being that I can speak, the voice of experience, being a counselor and have, and no friends who have been graduation coaches. And that was a part of my vision of not having a one-size-fits-all, but we need to find ways to reach those children who perhaps are not going to college. And I can tell you on an everyday basis, um, you are, as a counselor, ASCA says 250 to one counselor is a reasonable-sized caseload. Also, um, working as a counselor, you're responsible for a lot of things. Unless things has changed since 2016, all of our counselors here are also responsible to 504 plans, which means that you have to meet yearly with parents. So two weeks, uh, at the beginning of the school year, you're meeting individual parents to update those 504 plans, um, at the beginning of the school year. Then you have identified by the end of your 11th grade year, students who are in academic trouble and at risk of not graduating. So you have to have those, um, senior success meetings early on, uh, at the end of the 11th grade, sometime very early in the 12th grade year. So you do, counselors are doing a lot of things, accounting credits. You have to know how many credits your students have passed. So when someone comes into your office, say, well, Mr. Bryant, so on, so on, so on, you have to have those books up to date. You're writing letters of recommendations for those seniors who are doing early action. So it's a lot that is going on in the guidance office. And I cannot think of a better way of adding a, a graduation coach to work with those students that, uh, that are identified as having some type of academic issue and working and finding a pathway for those students to have a, a life after graduation plan when they leave here. So, um, graduate, that graduation coach is extremely important in working in, in conjunction with the school counselors. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Gurley? Next, thank you all, ladies, for your reports. We will now have comments from the community. And, um, if you are in the Zoom, um, room, please raise your hands and tell us your name and your address. Ms. Carmo, do we have anybody in the room? Okay. Next on the agenda is upcoming meetings for the budget. Um, on February 2nd, um, we will have a school board meeting at 5 o'clock here in the media center. February 8th, Charleston City School Board and the Charleston City Council will have a joint work, budget work session, 5 o'clock at K-Tech in the auditorium. February 16th, we will have another school board budget work session here at 5 o'clock in the media center, CHS. February 23rd, there will be a, um, city school board budget approval meeting at 5:00 p.m. here in the media center at Charlesville High School. If there's no further questions, concerns or business, this meeting is adjourned and we'll move forward into our closed session.